All right, good evening, everyone. Thank you all for coming to tonight's Planning Commission. I'm going to ask Commissioner Newman to lead us all in the Pledge of Allegiance. So please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Brenda. Can we have rope call, please?
Yes. Chair Baldino.
Here.
Vice Chair Newman.
Present.
Commissioner Corduff.
Here.
And Commissioner Wengate.
Here.
And Commissioner Hessler.
I'm here.
All right, that brings us to public communication. Anyone wishing to address the commission on anything not already on the agenda, now would be your time to do so. Not seeing a mad rush to the podium, we'll move on. Close public communication. Consent calendar, no items. Written communications?
There are no items today.
We have email.
That's related to the...
Right, okay. So that brings us to new business. We are here to consider possible action regarding adoption of a resolution approving Environment Assessment EA 1252, Administration Adjustment 1202, to allow 80 percent of the parking to be in the form of vehicle lifts exceeding the 20 percent maximum for tandem parking at 701 South Aviation and 555 South Aviation. Can we have a staff report, please?
Thank you, Chair. I'll try to explain this as coherently as possible. There may have been a lot of questions, especially when it comes to these percentages and what's considered tandem versus existing, so anyhow. So the item before you is an administrative adjustment. In essence, it's for the adjustment to the parking requirements or standards for a property over at 555 and 701 South Aviation. So the properties that we're looking at is over on the east side of town, bounded by Utah and Alaska, over on Aviation. The site currently has a total of 806 total spaces that are provided. There are 272 spaces that are provided at the 555 location, and that includes a combination of 98 tandem compact spaces plus 174 regular spaces, if you will. There are a total of 534 spaces that are currently allotted at the parking lot, which is located over at 701. It's that flag lot here, southern, to the south of the developed parcel. So this actually results in a total of 185 excess parking spaces that are available for the site. So ultimately, the applicant does propose to install a series of vehicle lifts similar to what you see here. There are, you know, different makes and models, but this kind of at least drives a point home in terms of ultimately the type of stackers that they'd like to put out there. And it's important to note that vehicle lifts are considered tandem parking. There is an interpretation that was included as part of your packet, and that indicates that these types of situations are considered tandem parking. And tandem parking is allowed per our code. There are some standards, and there are obviously mechanisms to exceed those standards, which is why this is before you today. So let's go into some of the weeds here. Let's start with kind of the current parking situation. I put a series of dots here. This in no way represents the layout or of the current parking situation. So, but the site currently maintains 806 parking spaces, so I'm going to try to give a visual here. So the parking requirement for the building at 555, as I indicated before, is 621 spaces. So this results in a 185 space surplus, of which 98 are currently in tandem form. So now, the applicant proposes installing vehicle lifts where 87 of the existing non-tandem surplus spaces would be converted to lifts. That results in 893 spaces. Again, this is using the existing surplus. The applicant also proposes to convert 395, or 391, excuse me, required spaces to lifts, and that results in the provision of a total of 1,184 total spaces that would serve that building. So why does this require an adjustment when they clearly are providing more than required? I mean, the requirement is 621. They ultimately will be coming in with 1,184. Well, as I indicated before, the zoning code does allow for up to 20 percent of the required parking to be tandem, or in this case, parking lifts or a combination of both. And in this case, based on 621, 20 percent of that is 124 spaces. So I kind of carved out there to the right of the line that just went in there, that's 124 spaces. So the applicant could potentially come in and put in 124 tandem spaces in the form of your typical traditional tandem, or in this case, as vehicle lifts. All the other excess parking that is to the right of that, you know, since it's all excess, our code does allow for that parking, that can be in whatever form. So that includes tandem, that includes vehicle lifts, compact, et cetera. So again, so 20 percent of the required can be in tandem form. So since the applicant would convert 247 spaces, additional of the other required spaces, now this results in a total of 391 required spaces that are going to be considered tandem or lifts. So this is equivalent to 63 percent of the required spaces that are going to be in the form of tandem or lifts, and that requires the adjustment because, again, it's over the 20 percent. So when we look at these administrative adjustments, obviously, as the commission is aware, there's certain findings that the staff and the commission need to make in order to grant those. Staff does believe that those can be made in a positive manner to warrant approval of this. Ultimately, what happens with this application is that it does provide even more, you know, excess parking. It almost doubles the amount of the required parking that would be available for the site. There were some conditions with, you know, how this is going to operate, and, you know, in speaking with the applicant, the applicant has indicated that they will be using a valet service, and that is a requirement that's been contained or included as a condition of approval in this adjustment, so you'll find that as well. There were some aesthetic concerns that staff did have in terms of the visual impacts from along the streets over on Hawaii and Alaska and Aviation, and so you'll see a condition in there that does require the installation and maintenance of landscaping along those thoroughfares in order to minimize that aesthetic impact. So with that, that concludes my report, and our recommendation is that the commission go over this application and ultimately approve the administrative adjustment and adopt the resolution.
Thank you, Eduardo. I see here on Section 14, it says they have to come back in six months for us to just kind of review how it's working.
Is that the updated staff report?
Looking at what was emailed me.
Yes, there was an email that went out on Monday with the updated staff report. That was...
Can I get a physical copy?
Sure.
Otherwise, I have to go to my city email and, God forbid, forward it to something I could use.
Was that condition of approval?
It's right here.
Yeah, but it's not in Ms. Lane's condition 14.
No.
Is that what you're talking about? But that's not what that says.
No. 14, "The valet operation condition contained shall be subject to review modifications as deemed necessary within six months," which time we can add, modify, whatever we want to do, which is not unusual for us to do.
No, absolutely. But I don't see it then.
So is there a reason, then, that that was changed?
It's not in the one I have here.
Is there a reason?
Our intention was to not include that because we didn't want to have an incomplete approval hanging over this. It's up to you, of course, but that was, our intention was not to include that.
And we're serving in a quasi-judicial function, so can someone give me a concise summary of facts of why so many cars are needed at this location?
It's driven by the potential tenants, so I think the applicant would be best to address that.
Okay. Any questions for staff before I open it up?
Same question.
Very good. All right. So now it's time for public communication. First right goes to the applicant. Kim, how are you?
I'm well, thank you. Nice to be here this evening.
Nice to see you.
Good evening, Chair Baldino, Vice Chair Newman, and Commissioners. I'm pleased to be here this evening, presenting the application for 555 and 701 South Aviation, and I will get to your question in the course of my comments. As indicated, the request that we've submitted to the city is to allow, exceeding the Section 15-5K requirement limiting 20 percent tandem. And as Eduardo very clearly illustrated, it's a combination of both required spaces and also as part of the excess parking that's being provided. And as he indicated, we have 621 spaces that were required for the building, which is approximately 236,000 square feet in size. However, the existing conditions are that there are 806 spaces already on site. With that, and I'll get into a little more detail in a moment, but the purpose of the extra spaces is driven by tenant demand. There's been much change in the office market, and that's really the driver behind it. And they substantially remodeled this property, the Corin Show, back in fall of 2016, or the year of 2016, and have been actively trying to lease the property since early 2017. So it's been nearly two and a half years, and this has been a roadblock to leasing. Most of the office and technology tenants, in a changing world of how businesses operate today, are demanding higher parking allowances for their needs and how they function. And so what we're finding is typically four to five parking spaces per thousand square feet is not atypical of what they're looking for. So that has really been the driver behind this request. I'm going to, at the conclusion of my comments, I'm going to turn it over to John Olin from Tishman-Spire, who's here this evening. He'll probably have a few more comments on this issue. So we currently are faced with a situation where there's prospective tenants that will not sign leases until essentially they know whether or not they're going to be able to meet the parking demand that they have. So the request is essentially for 428 vehicle lifts, and once you deduct out for some conversion of standard parking spaces to ADA, the end result is the 1,184 permanent parking spaces that Eduardo mentioned, with 63 percent of the parking stalls that are required being tandem. As a comparison, I did want to relate the fact that it is not unprecedented to have more than 20 percent tandem in the city. The zoning regulations for the Smoky Hollow specific plan actually allows up to 80 percent tandem, albeit that is typically, for the most part, on smaller properties, but those are quite often not managed by valet service. So the difference in the operation, I think, is relevant here. Tishman will hire and utilize an experienced valet service they use in other facilities that they own and manage. And the expectation is that the tandem spaces would be installed in phases based on each prospective tenant that comes into the property to meet the ratio that they're looking for, with an initial expectation of 90 stalls and approximately 10 to 12 personnel to operate the valet service, with a full service personnel of about 24 individuals when it's completely built out. So that's a little bit on the operational side. We did provide staff information about circulation and how the valet operation would work with valet stands at each of the three parking lots to ensure quick and efficient movement of the cars in each of the lots. And with that, I guess I would just close that this request is critical to the success of successful leasing of the property. We believe that the tandem parking can be successfully managed and operated with ample valet service that will be efficient and safe and handled in a timely manner, so as not to impact surrounding streets and properties. And with that, I thank you for the opportunity to present the project, and turn this over to John Olin from Tishman.
Thank you, Kim.
And I'll be available to answer questions.
Thanks, Kim.
Hello, I'm John Olin with Tishman-Spire. I'm in charge of all our leasing in Southern California. I've also been a resident of El Segundo since '87. I don't want to give away my age, but...
You're a newcomer.
Yeah, interloper. Four kids were raised here, and I have four grandkids that live in the city as well. We're over on Palm. I want to thank everyone for letting us come today. This is an important issue for us, and I'm going to try and answer any questions you have. I don't have a huge statement. I'm here more to answer questions and make you feel comfortable about it, but I will comment on the changing nature of office leases. It's been an interesting ride, and I've done landlord leasing and development for the last 35 years. And in fact, a small note, the building that we showed up there, I worked for Xerox for a couple of years, and I did my high-volume training in that building. So it was kind of a homecoming for me to buy it. I spent, I spent a lot of time in that building, so it was kind of neat to do it. If you want to attract tenants today, parking is the biggest issue, period. When you're developing office space, or if you're developing retail or anything else of a real estate nature, parking is one of your highest costs and one of your biggest worries. From the tenant's standpoint, open plan has changed the way that people do business, whether you're Hulu, whether you're Facebook, whether you're... any tech-related company has found, especially public companies, has found that they can drive the bottom line by putting more people in less space. It isn't draconian. I actually think open plan works better for most people. It's a great way to create synergies and teach people who are a little lower on the scale up, and they can hear people who have more experience doing it. There's a lot of great things about it. But the problem is it drives a lot of people to your site. And so when I go to lease a building like this, it is not uncommon, and I can talk specifically about the tenants we're talking to, I'm happy to do that, and other areas, it's not uncommon to see a request of five per thousand or more. If you take the number of spaces we have, and an oversell factor goes on that, we could do three and a half, 3.8, and it just was lacking. When we go to do this, it is a lost leader for us. Just to give you just some quick numbers, we hope to get 100 spaces. If we put in 100 stackers, it's $2 million. It's 20 grand a car. If you take the parking charge that we're charging, $87, $90 a month, which is market, it's a, I have the number here, hold on, it's a 17.9-year payback, just on a straight arithmetic average. So if you think, okay, look, these guys want to get a lot of parking because they want to drive revenue, and it is not the case. I lose money on parking. If I have a flat lot where I pave it over and landscape it, okay, we can make a couple bucks on it. But if I go up on a parking structure or down in the ground, it's an even bigger loss than this. So it's not a situation where the developer's trying to gain an economic foothold. I'm just trying to compete with other people who can offer more parking. That's basically it. We have, I heard mention of coming back on six months. Here's one of the things that's important to us. I'm trying to sign Publicis, Sachi and Sachi, out of Torrance for 80,000 feet. They are making me give them five per thousand. They won't be able to do the deal without it, and they've also, if I get additional spaces, they're going to take their fair pro-rata share of them, because where they are now, they park seven per thousand. I can't sign that lease. If I sign that lease, I'm committing to those spaces, five per thousand. If in six months' time the winds change, I'm in big trouble. So I'm absolutely fine with stipulating to something and having you check it or agree to it, but I would love to get a confirmation today because then I can go do that lease. Currently, I have two leases for 100, I'm sorry, 160,000 feet, or 165. Sachi and Sachi, who's going to consolidate some locations outside of El Segundo, they're staying on Rosecrans, but from areas south of us, they'll be 80,000 feet. I'm ready to sign that lease now. And what was the old Just Fab is now called Textile. That's an 85,000-foot lease, and they're ready to sign as well. I'm also talking to two other groups. One of them, I think, is L'Oreal for between 80,000 and 90,000 feet, that would take us to 95 percent leased, and Dollar Shave Club, who's over in the Marina right now. I'm trying to pull out of there. Those are big companies. I mean, Dollar Shave Club is Unilever. Publicis is the parent of Sachi. These are really big companies, and they drive a lot of revenue. And the parking drives revenue. People will pay, look, they'll pay a Class A rate if they can get Class A parking, so it drives revenue, it does drive revenue and rent for us. It's important to us, but it also drives revenues for the city as well. I think that's it. I mean, I could, I'm not shy about talking. I can go all day, but I'd rather just answer...
Most landlords won't tell us who their tenants are, so it's great to find out, oh, okay.
I am so open book. You asked me, like I said, I'll talk for five minutes, I'll talk for five days. So if you need more explanation from me, I'm happy to give it to you if you have...
Let me ask you a couple of questions.
Sure, absolutely.
So you've had this on the market for, what, like, two years, trying to get a lease out?
Yes, I have.
You can't get a lease out because now the market demands are you need more parking than you physically have on site.
Well, I don't want to say that I can't, but the problem is, when you don't, when you're not able to offer parking levels at five per thousand, you put your target market, so if this is your target market, you've cut yourself down on guys, law firms, which aren't a typical El Segundo tech use, a big building use. You limit the amount of, the types of people you can attract.
No one likes law firms.
No, I don't. I don't want to...
Sorry, Mr. King.
I don't want to disparage Mr. King. David, I love lawyers. I just want to get that out on the record.
I can make those jokes. I'm a lawyer, so it's okay.
Oh, you are a lawyer.
It's fine.
Yeah, look, it's been an issue. That's why we're here.
Okay, so let me rephrase my question. You can't get the Class A tenant unless you offer a Class A parking situation?
Correct.
Okay, okay.
There are, there are Class A, we have Class A buildings that offer less, but in this particular market, parking's king. And you're going to find that on the Northrop site. You're going to find that on the Raytheon site. I'm sure, I'm not privy at all, you do from a planning commission standpoint, but I'm sure not the first guy to come in here with a parking issue.
No, that's all we talked about.
Yeah, it's a real big deal.
Okay.
In fact, can I talk you into building a city parking lot over on Aviation for us?
I'm more interested in Holly, taking that one up.
Yeah.
Or taking over the Chevron lots.
How are you doing well with that parking structure there?
What's that?
Is that parking structure doing well, the one that's...
The city parking one?
Yeah.
The one nobody knows about?
The one by Good Stuff over here?
Yeah, the one by Good Stuff.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah.
We had a survey done because that was the big thing.
Nobody knows it's there.
Yeah, that's part of your challenge.
We changed the sign, though, thanks to Jay. Free public parking.
Yeah.
Okay.
If you sign, you just say tenant only.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
All right, so from what I've heard you tell us is that without this requirement, you're not going to be able to get the class of tenant you need or that you want to maintain, and that's why the change is needed.
Yeah. Look, we love credit. We really do. And the big guys like Publicis and Unilever all know that they held something in credit, and when they come to you, they're telling you, if you can't provide five per thousand, I'm not coming to your site.
Okay. When I read over the conditions of approval, number three says, wait, no, four, "All vehicle valet stands will be centrally located," blah, blah, blah. But where is the language that says that all parking services have to be run by a valet company? Like, we've all said that, and they seem like they're agreeing to that, but where in these 10, does it straight up say, "You get these car lifts because you will always have a valet company operate the car lifts safely," whatever? That's easy enough to add.
Yeah, we're very amenable to that.
Okay.
And by the way, most tenants worth their salt are going to ask you to run it in a first-class fashion.
Right.
And one last thing, two things. One, none of this queues on the street, so all this is done internally on the parking lot. I will not back these people up on your street. And two, we are running an app, so you worry about the quality of parking, right? So what happens is, if I have my car up on one of your, on my stand, I literally can push a button and say, "I'm coming in five minutes," and they have the time to get it out. So it is, I go out there, I'm standing, waiting.
Stand right away.
Now, 20 people have queued up behind me. It's, we're going to, we have an app that we're going to use, and we've written it into the Sachi lease that we're required to, that will allow them to call the car from us, and we'll have it ready for them when they go.
And the hours of operation?
Whatever, our typical building hours are eight to six. These companies like to work a little bit on flex hours, so my guess is nine to 6:30, nine to seven. We'll have a couple of valets, we'll have whatever we need, and I'm happy to stipulate to that. But typically, you get some flow between 7:30 and 9:00. 9:00, everybody starts to roll in, kind of goes between 9:00 and 10:00, and then in the afternoon, it starts at 5:00 as a trickle. Actually, it starts, the heavyers, at 5:00, and then it trickles off after that. So my guess is 7:30 to 7:30, if you had to, if I had to pin it down. Does that answer your question, Brenda? Okay.
And it's tenant parking only?
This is tenant parking only. And I know that you're very sensitive to LAX parking. There will be no LAX parking. There will be no extracurricular parking. This is our tenants-only, nothing else. I'm not, it's not our, we don't want to accommodate anybody else.
Since you are a real numbers guy, John, I know you really are very good at what you do.
Thank you.
How would you explain that what's come before planning commission, that all of the talk has been reduction in cars, that in five years, 10 years, 20 years out, we are going to not need the parking or not need that, that there's going to be alternative methods of transportation? How are you finding that?
Yeah, look, it's funny, I was just on a business panel at 555 where I was asked that same question. It's a great question. I don't believe that. I really don't.
Okay.
I'll ask, raise your hand if you're willing to give up your car. There, are you? Actually, I did try Uber for a while. But look, I only, these densities affect tenants' bottom line, and so they will keep pushing that envelope until they're stopped, and they're stopped by the number of parking spots they probably have. But I don't, I'm not a subscriber that says, "If you build a lot today, that you won't need it in 10 years." I don't think it works that way. I really don't. And I'm not, I don't know if that argument is good for me or bad. I'm just telling you, people in LA...
You're saying, you're saying that you're willing to put a $2 million gamble on the fact that you're going to need it.
Yes, you know what? That's a great point, yes. I'm willing to gamble $2 million that I won't, that I'll need those spots in five years. I just don't subscribe to that theory. I hear it a lot. I don't subscribe to it.
But you haven't seen the trend.
I just sat on the 405 this morning for 45 minutes. I, I'm going to stick by my comment. It's not getting better, it's getting worse.
Let me ask that question a different way.
Sure.
How far is that Xerox facility, I'll call it that, because I don't know where it is now, from the metro station? How far is that?
It's a five-minute walk.
What is the, the city of Los Angeles, what is their circle for transit-oriented design?
Well, that's the challenge with El Segundo is, and my wife asked me this last night. She said, "Why didn't we take the train?" If you want to take the train into West LA, where the, where the, most of these tech tenants are, so if they need to go to West LA, you literally have to go downtown, then take the downtown to Santa Monica line. There is no connection yet between West LA and El Segundo. Mass transit is getting there. I'm excited about it because we own two buildings on Wilshire Boulevard where transit stops are near us. It'll, on our property, on one and one right down the stra... It'll, on, you know, on our property on one and one right down the street on the other. I think by 2028, it'll round out better for the Olympics and they'll do a really good job. It's coming. I do believe that part is coming, but it's not there yet.
Does your building qualify for TOD dollars in El Segundo?
I don't, I, I'm sorry, I don't know the answer to that question.
I mean, based on the proximity to that metro station?
Um, I don't think so. Not that I'm aware of, and probably should be aware of it, but I don't.
Yeah, yeah, that's a tough one for me. I mean, it's, I, I, I agree with Brenda and with, you know, I said, I'm on a ULI panel for, for building healthy places, and it's all about, our, our focus is about pedestrian-level transportation. And I do believe car, car trips will be reduced over time. It's, it's a tricky one, also with, you know, Saatchi. I actually worked for Saatchi for fifteen years.
Oh, no kidding?
Yeah, and so.
Down in that Torrance facility?
It was Delama Mall's largest ad agency.
And you, so you know, it was, you have seven per thousand parking down there free.
Yes, exactly. So.
Wow, what a small world.
I wonder, I wonder how much of that seven ratio, seven-spot ratio is based on the fact that they are in Delama Mall and, you know, they, when, when I was there, there was never, no one ever said.
No, there was no rules. I totally get it. And you're right. And they're a bloated tenant. I don't mean that disrespectfully. It was, hey, guys, there's a lot, go park. Okay, so, they do have seven per thousand parking, and I'm jamming them down to five, and they're having a fit because there's seven people, let's use hundreds. There's seven hundred people at Saatchi, and so they have to go to them and say, we need two hundred volunteers to figure out how they can get to work without.
Right. And they incent those people. They give, you know, they give them credits.
Absolutely. One last thing about this, and it gets, kind of touches on the topic in Brenda's as well. Look, we're putting stackers in. They have a limited life, right? So, in ten years, to the extent that this doesn't work, or it gets reduced, we're just back down to a straight parking lot. I'm not building a facility. I hope it does. Look, I'm, I think it's ludicrous to spend sixty minutes to go eleven miles in LA. But if it, if it does bring itself down and people start finding alternative means, I'm good with that and will be good with that. But the reality of today is, if I want to sign your ex-employer, I need to find parking for them.
Can you give us a, an, a comparative, like, what does Team One have for parking in?
Well, I know because nineteen sixty is there. They're nineteen, we used to own nineteen sixty grand. I still believe they're there.
Oh, I'm thinking of Team One, which is now the old post office in, in Playa Vista, so.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. They moved from nineteen sixty to that.
That is correct. They moved there.
Yes, they have four per thousand plus. I don't know how they address the extra, the extra tenants.
And the Hulus and the Youtubes of the world?
Four and five.
Okay, and so that's what we're talking here?
Yes.
Is approximately four and five.
These are kind of, ten years ago, you could get away with two-point-five to three. If you had more than three, awesome. It was great. You were preferred. And then, when we went through this densification, through office systems and other things, four became the minimum. And if you could offer five, great. If you could offer six, unbelievable. Like, who's the software people over in Playa, up in, up near Playa? They just built their own facility up on the hill there, Corporate Point. They built it ten years ago. I can't remem, I'm sorry, I'm a little, little perplexed at this point. They built five, they had some vision and built five per thousand. And when that building sold, it was a real hit. People ran to it because, my God, I can get five per thousand parking. Think of all the tenants I can attract. It's a real issue. Building buildings is easy. Designing buildings is easy. Trying to figure out how to attract tenants and get their tenants there is hard.
You're going to have to step up to the microphone because we're being broadcast all throughout El Segundo.
Funny question to answer your question, I should say. We actually did an internal study in our office. We've got twelve employees. For one month, we all agreed to park our car at 10-900 Wilshire Boulevard, and we all agreed to, be it Uber or taxi or bike ride or use the little scooters, agree to, one month, track the progress, track how that impacted your life, track what the costs were. I would say the, the millennials, the younger kids liked the, the interaction, the ability to have some flexibility. Granted, it was also all paid for by, you know, Tishman as part of this study. For me, to get from Redondo Beach, I'm born and raised Manhattan Beach, to get from Redondo Beach to our office in Santa Monica, forty-six stops, and it would probably take me about an hour and a half, and I'd also have to walk fifteen minutes within all of that. So, it's nonsensical in that standpoint from a public transportation at this point. And then, from the perspective of cars off the road, I'm taking an Uber. So, the Uber's already on the road. Me taking the Uber doesn't get a car off the road. I mean, it's, whether it's me driving or the Uber guy driving.
It's not a parking spot.
Still using.
It is, it's rideshare, though.
Yeah, so, but, to the point of, you know, the flexibility is, is not there for public transportation right now. It's expensive, you know, with, with respect to trying to take an Uber everywhere. And, yeah, I mean, it, so it'd be a huge help, so I wanted to chime in on that.
Okay. I think the conversation about people not driving cars is probably more applicable to, like, your downtown area. People are going out, go Uber. But I'm, I'm never not going to drive to work.
You're never not going to drive to.
Not going to drive to work.
Yeah.
My dad used to run a restaurant literally around the corner. He drove to work every day.
Yeah.
He's like, I might have to go somewhere. It's like, you never go anywhere. Drove every day.
Yeah, look, and.
That's not a good example.
My dad. You're saying my dad's not a good example?
I just don't see it, I don't see it until we actually have serious, serious mass transportation, like a, like a monorail over the freeway or something until there's a really big people mover.
I think it's different if it's your work environment, and I think we have enough evidence to find that in order to get these high-density tenants, they're going to want high-density parking. I mean, I wouldn't want to see something like this in Smoky Hollow. It wouldn't work. Lots are too small.
You couldn't do it.
But you're kind of out there on your own in aviation. People whiz by that thing and probably won't even know what's going on on that site. So, when I first read it, I said, A, this is crazy. B, how much does a car lift cost, right? What's the price on a car lift? Twenty grand?
Twenty grand, twenty grand.
Twenty grand a pop.
Twenty?
Maintenance, operation of it, staff.
Yeah, by the way, my seven, my seventeen-point-nine doesn't include time value of money, and it doesn't include the, the additional people you need to, they're very labor-intensive. So, if I'm losing money just on buying them, I'm losing more money because I can't pass that through. So, I'm losing more money on having a guy there lifting it.
Yes, the maintenance, the service, the valet.
Yes, yes.
Making a great argument for what a bad idea this is for you.
We also analyzed the cost to try to provide this value with parking structures, and the cost was going to be, I want to say it was fourteen million to build in a large enough parking structure, and then you're going to have a massive concrete structure that we have to live with for a life expectancy of twenty-five-plus years. This gives us a little bit of flexibility to at least try this out, to appease, if you will, to build in the density, density in a flexible type of environment.
Right. And you'll be motivated to make it work because you've got to keep your tenant happy.
Yeah, look, and, and one of the things, and Michelle, you had a question. I want to get to it. But one of the things I do want to say is, Tishman's buyer is a New York-based operation. We have offices around the world and develop around the world. We have thirty-five million square feet around the world. I only say that because we're really known in the business as being a really good landlord and a world-class developer. And you're right, we're never, we're not putting these in to hoodwink someone or get to Saatchi there and then let them down. There are guarantees I have as, based on performance in the lease. And when Sue talked to me, I'm sorry, Kim asked me about, hey, you have to stipulate, you may have to stipulate, you have valets. Absolutely. We do it whether you stipulate it or not. We run a first-class organization and we will. This is about attracting tenants and making the property economically viable. I'm sorry, Michelle, what's your question?
I'm assuming it's a secured lot after work hours on weekends?
Yeah, it's security. We have security on site, twenty-four-hour security. It's an open lot. I mean, it's gated.
Okay.
Yeah. We won't have the ability to, but people have the ability to walk through it.
They're not going to come in and tinker with your car lift?
No, well, my guess is they go down and lock at the end of the night, so kids can't go play on it, and I got, my guy will tell you.
It will be, during the hours of operation, when the demand is there, we will have valets to service everything. As the cars start to diminish through the course of the day, all cars will be brought off the lift and the locks will be turned off with key. So, no one would be able to tinker with it, if you will. It is fully badge access, visitor parking, but everything's operated by valet in the first place, so they're pulling onto the site, as we said. No queuing on the street. It'll all be queuing down, down the aisles within our parking lot, and they hand over their keys. And where their car goes, they don't know until they app request to have it back delivered to the.
So, none of these lifts are self-serve? They all have to be handled by somebody else?
Absolutely. You pull thirty feet onto that lot and someone is there to greet you with a tie, take your keys. You go do your work. You say, I would like my car at two-thirty. Your car is where you dropped it off at two-thirty. You do not touch, you do not drive on the property. That's part of the world-class organization experience to attract the tenant.
When the car lift is down, can you just park on it like a normal spot?
Uh, no, I don't.
Yeah, well, you can. Yeah, I mean.
You'd just be on the lift and it would be all the way lowered?
Correct.
Okay.
But, in that case.
And you fill all that up first, and then as, the whole, the whole parking lot isn't valet. You self-park as a tenant.
There are, there's a combination of self-park spots, valet spots, and valet attendant for the, for the.
The lifts?
Yes.
And does it get filled in that order?
My guess is that will fill, my personal belief is, will fill the, the lifts last because from a queuing standpoint, it's not as easy to get those on and off.
It's the slowest.
So, it's a slow, let's say it's a Friday workday, half-day, it's a holiday before, it's a day before a holiday. I don't think those lifts get used. They'll be the last to be used. But the problem is, I still need to accommodate them because I've given that allocation to another tenant.
Right.
Two A tenant.
So, you may not need that. All, you, your first, the first phase is how many additional?
Ninety, ninety stackers.
Ninety stackers, okay. And that's just, that's for you to get, that first tenant?
That's for me to get Saatchi onboard and in.
Okay.
And then we'll need more as, as we go. Like, as I try to close a deal with Dollar Shave Club, the broker who has told me, John, if you can't do five per thousand, you can't play.
And this is just random numbers that, that are, you are able to provide parking? It's not specific parking spots for these tenants, or is it?
No, the only, the only person that would get a specific spot is a reserved spot. I'll use my employee of the month spot, you know, the sign that says that. We have a couple of those. That's usually less than three percent of our overall parking.
Right.
The big guys ask for that, the, the CEO types, and, but everyone else is random. We actually call them, when we put them in the leases, not spaces, we call them passes.
Okay.
You get it, you have a pass to go in the lot. It doesn't specify exactly where. So, as, as Jonathan said, the guys will get up and show you to the right spot.
And, and to supplement, so 555, there are no, we do not intend, from an experience standpoint, there will be no lifts on 555. All the lifts and the density will be on the 701 lot, which is purely valet. So, all the reserve, majority of the reserved spots would probably be on the 555, the property lot. So, you park your car and you walk right in the door.
Right. So, these things are eleven feet high? Is that approximately?
Yeah, plus, minus.
Thereabouts. And so, so describe the, the buffers, the landscape buffers that are going to shield some of this height.
So, I mean, we can do any combination of things. The intent would probably be some kind of landscaping. There is a lot of landscaping between us and the neighboring property. It's funny, I was laughing at the image that they showed, the Google Earth. It's an older image, the Google Earth image. So, there is a lot of landscaping currently on site, and Kim and I were talking. I mean, we would be more than happy to meet with whoever you'd like to walk through our site with us, and we'd point out where the first tranche of ninety will go and agree upon, you know, I, I definitely think there will need to be some kind of landscaping along Hawaii. Other than that, the, the lifts abut the neighboring properties, so I'm not sure that it's as impactful, whether I have to put a bush there, if you will.
So, so the landscaping goes in at the same time as these things?
I mean, it's, it would, at the tail end of the construction, yeah.
Okay, right.
But as we're delivering, as part of the permit process, we'd agree upon whatever landscaping that you guys, whatever we agree upon, I should say.
Yeah, I guess I'd want to know that, that's, a certificate of occupancy is probably not the right word, but whatever it takes to get the permit, the landscape is in and it's all taken care of, rather than a year lag or something.
Absolutely not. We would never want that from an experience standpoint for our tenants.
Jonathan, tell them what the, the lag, the build time is. So, I say, go today. It takes me how many months to get it up and running?
So, for, for the ninety, I mean, it's a material lead time is, is the longest thing. We've got to put a big check, checkout to get the $2 million worth of stackers. It's, it's a four-month or so timeline, probably from the day that we have a permit to the time I'm turning this over. I mean, if you think about it, I got to rip up the site. I got to build some concrete.
Right.
Some power, yep. I got to build some concrete foundations, repave, grade, back to, you know, whatever, get the civil all aligned, any supplemental lighting that ends up being required in landscaping. It's a pretty quick turnaround, all things considered. And we accomplished that during the course of construction for Saatchi and Saatchi. Actually, I, I think we've agreed.
We, we, yeah, we agreed that when I reached a certain percentage of the lease, that we'd start.
Yeah. So, for right now, day one, we have ample parking, since they're only taking eighty thousand out of the total square footage. They will just have more cars on the site, but as we lease up, we'll need to build those.
What are the TIs for that building to get to Saatchi or?
I'm giving, first, I want to recognize my wife, who's came to support me today, my wife Laura.
He's doing a great job.
Yes. She doesn't, I'm not, I'm much better in here than I am in home, trust me.
We haven't made a decision yet.
Yes. Her, her job's a lot harder than mine, trust me. To answer your question, we are giving Saatchi a hundred dollars a foot. That, if you know TIs, tenant improvements, that's gone up a lot in the last couple of years because prices have gone through the roof. And we're actually giving Just Fab, who's now called Textile, on their expansion, a hundred and forty dollars a foot.
And, and I'm sorry, I guess my question was not a dollar-specific. How much, what sort of renovations are happening on those buildings? Are they pretty much the same? You're going to keep them the same?
If I understand your question correctly, it was a rabid maze when, when I was there at Xerox. A lot of halls back. We wiped the entire building out, took the exterior walls, left them in place, made a fifteen-foot breezeway inside, and then put a new glass box inside those exterior walls. So, it is completely, it is completely gutted. We should have brought a picture of it, but, and ready for TIs right now.
Nice.
Oh, actually, ready for TIs as of two years ago.
All right.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I was just going to ask that.
I can go, come on. I haven't been tested yet. Okay. Thank you very much for your, your consideration. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Anyone else wishing to address a DIAS? No? Want to throw anything in? No? All right.
Okay, we'll close public communication. All right, so our role was to basically find a factual reason why this would be required. I think we've got more than enough information from the applicant about the property sitting there, not being leased out to its fullest potential, and how this is being driven by the market. Like I said, I wouldn't want to see eighty percent tandem probably anywhere else in town, but I think the location of this out on Aviation, I mean, they're kind of in their own world out there. It'll be maintained on site, so I really don't have a problem with it. The only change I want to propose is just having a sentence in there saying that all vehicle lifts must be run by a valet service, which I believe the applicant's already told us a hundred times he's going to do. It just doesn't say that in the document.
I'd like to suggest we put that it's for tenant use only. We don't know what the economy's going to do.
Okay.
With that, would there be any flexibility? I'm just thinking of sporting events or things that come up on the weekends. Would they have any ability to request a consideration?
Well, if it's, if it's badge parking, you're going to have a hard time getting people in and out of there.
Like, on weekends?
Yeah, I know, but what specifically are you talking about?
I'm thinking if the Aquatic Center has a swim meet, the, whatever has a track meet, like a large-scale parking, just to leave it as an option, that it could be something that could be utilized during off-work hours. Not without some sort of process, but.
Yeah, for example, Manhattan Beach will have events at the pier.
Yeah.
And they will use parking lots at the mall and they'll shuttle people back and forth, and so, you know. I, I think your concern, Carol, is mine, is we don't want this to become an LAX lot.
That's exactly my concern.
I agree with that.
Yeah, so I don't know how you would accommodate that.
You know, special events, I'm okay with.
Special, like, the request for a special event permit or something.
Right, so maybe it should be that would be use for tenants only, not for any other commercial, other commercial pro, purpose. So, that would, that would allow it to be used.
The tenant isn't asking for that, so.
No airport parking.
I'm sorry?
The tenant isn't asking for that.
No, but you never know.
So, what you're saying is, if we say that it, know it, that it only may happen for this, then it's allowing them some flexibility. They may not even want it. That's my point. They may not even, that might not be, even be an option. That's my point, they may not even, that might not be, even be an option for them to consider to have that as an option.
Have what as an option?
Use of parking lot on, outside of their existing business hours. Why, why should we even consider that? When the, are you saying on behalf of the city to protect the city to?
If the city's interested, if the Olympics come, and we wanna house people, and there's no way, and they want, we want, I mean, it would be only if it's a benefit to something the city has going on.
Do you wanna maybe put that clause, with, with an exception of a special event permit?
Yeah.
I think that's the right word.
Yeah, that's good.
That's your point, yes, they might not want it at all, which is fine, but.
Yeah, I mean, we're. Would allow it, yeah.
It's, it's a hypothetical, that I wouldn't imagine.
I'm gonna reopen public communications. I'm sorry, we never budget non-tenant revenue, it's just not something we do.
Yeah.
Like, a pumpkin patch calls us and says, hey, can we, no, thank you, it's just not what we do. I'm happy to stipulate no LAX parking. I think it's, I, I think it's sometimes wise to be a little bit open, but it's not something we plan on, nor are we asking. We just don't count on that revenue. Thank you.
But what about the pumpkin patch?
No, I'm kidding, I'm kidding, right.
If you put a pumpkin patch permit in there, I'll let them happen, but, I don't know, I will work it out.
All right, I will reclose public communication, thank you. Okay, so the modification would be valet service at all times, um, and then what was the other one, Sam?
Special event.
Tenant, tenant parking only.
You don't need it, but now you got it.
Yep.
Do you wanna say no LX parking?
No LX parking.
Sure.
Yeah.
Sure, that's agreeable, right?
Yes.
Okay. All right, any other discussion?
Not for me?
And this is an adjustment just for this property, not the zone that we're in?
This is, applies only to this property.
And, and what's the ratio at, like, Eleven, for example, the parking ratio, do you know? At, at some of these other, uh, commercial, uh, areas? Just out of curiosity.
I can render a guess if you like.
Sure.
My guess is they're somewhere between three and four.
Yeah, I, I think it was, um, I think it was four, and actually, there's parts of Eleven that needed more parking, so they actually leased more parking across the street where AC Hotel is, so, it depends on the use, yeah.
You know, one of the, uh, the City Corporate Towers has a competitive advantage, they actually do have four per thousand parking, which is really great for them. When we owned stuff in the super block, it was all pretty much three per thousand parking.
All right, thank you all. Uh, I know more about parking and tenants than I thought I needed to know. This is great, we'll have you back. Okay, so there's no further discussion, I'll accept a motion as modified.
I make a motion that, um, regarding environmental assessment number EA dash one-two-five-two and administrative adjustment number one-nine-dash-zero-two to exceed the twenty percent maximum for tandem parking in the form of vehicle lifts in a parking lot at seven zero-one South Aviation Boulevard, that's serve an existing building at five-five-five, South Aviation Boulevard, uh, be approved per modifications.
I'll second that.
All right, motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, five-zero, thank you.
Mr. Chair, the record should reflect that that's a final decision, and it's subject to appeal within ten days.
Great. All right, that brings us next to continued business none, and now report from Planning and Building Safety Director.
I just wanted to remind the commission and members of TV that on Monday, um, next Monday, August twelfth, there'll be a city manager meet and greet at the, um.
Slice and Pint.
Slice and Pint, from four-thirty to six-thirty, so have some, come and have some pizza, I'm not sure about the beer.
Have some pint.
Yeah, have some pint.
He's not paying for the beer?
He's paying for the pizza, he's paying for the pizza, I'm not sure about the beer.
All right, thank you, Sam. Any planning commissioner comments tonight?
None for me?
All right, we are adjourned, our next meeting will be August twenty-second here at five-thirty, thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much.